I'd like to welcome everybody to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting scheduled for March 8, 2018. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. We're down two commissioners this morning, but we do have a quorum, so let's get rocking. Mr. Goodrich, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there are. You received a memo. Item number 2, Z-17-06, the Eurice rezon, changes the staff report attached. Number 4, PDC-17-10G, related to PDC-05-58ZP Palmetto Plaza, revised general development explanation of change and changes to staff report attached. And item number 5, PDR-17-19ZP SMR Northeast LLC/ Crestwind, changes to staff report attached.
Thank you very much. Ms. Shanker? I'm sorry, Mr. Goodrich, I believe we have a new staff member, do we not?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ryan Todd, his recent hire with Bads, and we're very fortunate to have him. He will be working in the public hearing section, so you'll see his face a lot from now on.
Very good.
Right, welcome.
Welcome. Where are you coming from, Mr. Todd?
Denver.
Denver.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure you'll find a lot of things in Florida that are very similar.
I guess, but I'm looking for them.
At least there's skiing here.
Yeah, there is water skiing.
Welcome. Thank you. All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Shank, are there any changes from the county attorney's office?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go on to the next item. The next item is the minutes for the February 8, 2018 hearing. Is there any revisions, questions, comments regarding those minutes? Has everybody had a chance to review them? Okay, if there are no changes, the Chair will entertain a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Roth, second. Again, any discussion? Chair will call the matter to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda is citizen comment. So this is an opportunity for the folks in the audience to come forward and make a comment on something that is not on today's agenda. If you have a comment on something that is on today's agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak when that item is heard, but is there anybody who wishes to come forward and speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close that item and we're going to move on to, actually consent is the next item on the agenda, but we have nothing on consent. So our first item to be heard is a presentation upon request, it's quasi-judicial, so we're going to take the opportunity at this time to swear in anybody who wishes to speak on the quasi-judicial matter. So if you intend to speak today, even as a citizen, if you would, please rise.
Please swear or affirm that the factual statements and factual representations you are about to make to the Planning Commission are truthful and accurate. Thank you. Any step to the podium, please state your name, and if you've been sworn.
All right, we're having technical difficulties. I don't know if we can get somebody to help Mr. Corrigan, he's having issues, his computer keeps flipping off the agenda here, so. All right, we're going to move on to item number 2. Mr. Goodrich, could you please read item number 2 into the record?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number 2 is Z-17-06, the Eurice rezon. It's a rezoning of approximately plus or minus 1.33 acres of the western portion of an approximately plus or minus 2.33 acre site located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Ellington Galette Road and 57th Street East at 5702 36th Avenue, from the A1 Suburban Agriculture, one dwelling unit per acre, to the RSF2 Residential Single Family, two dwelling units per acre zoning district.
Thank you. Again, this is an item that is a presentation upon request, so what I'm going to ask is the applicant to come forward and make an introduction, and then we'll see if that require, if there is a requirement for any additional discussion regarding the project.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Bob Schmidt with Land Planning Associates, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
This is a simple rezon request that Mr. Eurice owns the entire 2.33 acre piece, but he was, there's a house in the front and a barn in the back. Occasionally, he keeps a horse in the barn in the back, and you can't have a horse in RSF2, so we're keeping that portion, that one acre back there, A1. The RSF2 portion will be split to accommodate a second house. These are both for his kids, and that's the intent of the rezon.
Okay. I think we've heard a few of these recently, and just to clarify, Mr. Schmidt, the, this isn't going to allow a subdivision, this zoning's not going to allow a subdivision to come in and build on the lot, it's going to be limited to the number of minutes that's referred to.
Yeah, we have to do a certified lot split to create the second lot, and he's prepared to do that after the rezon.
Okay.
So we ask that you approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any, any questions or requirement for additional information from the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Okay, we're going to open this up for public comment. Again, this is quasi-judicial, so you must be sworn, so is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of that. Do the commissioners require any additional information on this? We've got a lot of information in our packet, and I'm sure everybody's had an opportunity to review that, so. Okay, seeing no discussion, deliberation, or need for additional discussion, we're going to call the matter to vote, all those in...
You want me to make the motion?
Yeah, we probably should. The democratic process gets...
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion. Based upon the staff report, evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, and the finding, the request to be consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan and the Manatee County Land Development Code, I move to recommend adoption of Manatee County Zodin Ordinance Number Z-17-06 as recommended by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Rhodes, second. Is there any additional discussion or deliberation? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call the matter to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you. All right, we're going to go on to item number 3. Mr. Goodrich, could you please read item number 3 into the record?
Yes, item number 3 is PDMU-17-30P. It's 423 Swanee Avenue, FKA 423 Partners LLC. Preliminary site plan for a mixed-use redevelopment project on an approximately 0.5096 acre parcel or site in the ROR Retail/Office/Residential Future Land Use category within the PDMU Planned Development Mixed-Use Zoning District, generally located at the northeast corner of Swanee Avenue and Pinehurst Street at 423 Swanee Avenue, Sarasota in Manatee County.
Thank you. All right, again, this is a quasi-judicial application, and it's a presentation upon request, and I'm going to do the same thing, I'm going to ask the applicant to briefly introduce it, and we'll see what dialogue comes from that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Bob Schmidt with Land Planning Associates, and I have been sworn. This is a parcel, 423 Swanee, it's just off the US 41 corridor. It doesn't actually front on US 41, but it's, there's no other way to get to it except for US 41. There is a building on the site now, Randy Cycles, and Mr. Tilton, my client's intent is to slowly, through two phases, tear that building down, build a new building, actually build a new building first, keep that building there, then tear that building down, and the second phase will be the construction of the overall building. Being that this is so close to the urban corridor, this is a, we hope this is a catalyst for redevelopment. I do have a picture, if you'd like to see, of the existing condition versus what we propose.
Sure.
And I think you'll see the improvement. This is the existing, and eventually, again, that building will be gone completely, but it won't be until the second phase is built, and this is what's proposed. Building will be used for a electric bicycle business, and it's something that's a little innovative, I know Ryan and I talked about it a little bit before we got started, and Mr. Tilton has a lot of the same interests in that regard as Ryan does. So, you know, the other thing is that this property is saddled with PDMU zoning, so anything that you do has to come back through the public hearing process, so that's why we're here.
Okay.
Thank you.
And again, Mr. Schmidt, to clarify, this is a PDMU, it's a change of use, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's why it's in front of us?
Change of use and an expansion of what's there now, and a redevelopment of what's there now.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you.
All right, again, this is a quasi-judicial application, so I'm going to open it up to the public, and again, if you wish to speak, you need to be sworn in, so is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing nobody come forward, we're going to close the public hearing, I mean, the public comment portion of the hearing, and ask the Commission, is there any additional information required to make a determination on this application? Okay, seeing no additional questions, the Chair will entertain a motion. We'll do it right this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. Based on the staff report, evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, and finding the request to be consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan and Manatee County Land Development Code as conditioned herein, I move to recommend approval of the Manatee County Ordinance Number PDMU 17-30 Para-P. Approval of the preliminary site plan with stipulations A1 through A6, B1 through B3, and C1, and granting specific approval for alternatives to the Land Development Code Sections 1001.6.A. Elimination of the requirement to construct a sidewalk along the north side of Swanee Avenue, 700, 701, and 900, relief from requirement to landscape the eastern portion of the site, and 402.11.D.3 adjacent to the front and side setbacks established for PDC zoning districts, GC zoning districts as recommended by staff.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Rhodes, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Roth, second. Any additional discussion or deliberation? Seeing none, the Chair will call the matter to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. All right, we're going to move on to item number 4, which is the last item, that is a presentation upon request, and Mr. Goodrich, could you please read item number 4 into the record?
Yes, item number 4, PDC-17-10G, related to PDC-05-58ZP Palmetto Plaza. A new general development plan for a commercial center to include a convenience store and gas pumps, as well as additional commercial uses, on an approximately 9.16 acre site within the PDC Planned Development Commercial Zoning District, generally located west of US 41 at the intersection of US 41 and Bay Shore Road extending to the intersection of US 41 and Rock Payne Road, 89th Street East, and the intersection of Bay Shore and Rock Payne Road, 89th Street East, at 9025 US 41 North Palmetto.
Thank you. All right, again, presentation upon request, so we'll ask the applicant. Mr. Schmidt, you don't get frequent flyer mires.
I want to thank staff for putting me at the first three items on the agenda, so that was helpful. Good morning again, my name is Bob Schmidt, Land Planning Associates, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
This is similar to the project that you just saw, because it has PDC zoning, it's had PDC zoning for some time. There was a relatively intense plan that was approved with the 05, the PDC plan in '05. I don't think it got approved until '07, but in any event, during the economic downturn, the plan expired, so it's been on the market for some time. My client has come along and said, let's get an entitlement to the property, so at least we can market it to somebody. And so that's really the purpose of this. We decided to do a general development plan because they don't expire, and that means that this plan essentially gives it the zoning in perpetuity. We did go through the use chart and identify things that we thought were inappropriate, and we crossed them off, we struck them, struck through them, but the hope is that we get some interest and some people that can do the things that are allowed on the use chart. So that's all I have at this point, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt, just for clarification, so this is just a straight zoning without an intended use, the criteria that's been established and the information presented is, it would be an administrative process to determine if it was appropriate, so it would come in like any other straight zoning, as opposed to a PD, they would have a more narrow focus on the options that they would have, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, any questions for Mr. Schmidt? Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're going to, again, open the, die us up for comments from the public, so is there anybody in the public who wishes to come forward and speak on this matter? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask the Commission what the pleasure is.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Chair will consider a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, based on the staff report, evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, and finding the request to be consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan and the Manatee County Land Development Code as conditioned herein, I move to recommend adoption of the Manatee County Ordinance Number PDC 17-10 Para-G. Approval of the general development plan with stipulations A1, A8, A1 through A8, B1 through B5, C1, C2, and D1, granting specific approval for our project, number 1 adjacent to a perennial stream as recommended by staff.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Rhodes, is there a second? Mr. Roth, second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, the Chair will call the matter to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. All right, the next item on the agenda is the presentation, scheduled presentation, so Ms. Shank, item number 5, I disclose to you that I have a potential conflict.
Yes, I've advised Mr. Conley to abstain from voting due to a potential vote in conflict of interest with a past employment relationship, and he's going to file the appropriate form with the clerk and abstain, and Mr. Rhodes will chair the meeting.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to turn over the gavel to Mr. Rhodes, and I'll step off the dice. Thank you.
On item number 5, Mr. Goodrich, would you please read the item into the record?
Yes, item 5 is PDR-17-19ZP SMR Northeast LLC/ Crestwind. It's a rezon of approximately 249.58 acres, generally located plus or minus 1.5 miles east of Lorraine Road, plus or minus 1.5 miles north of SR 70, and plus or minus 1.3 miles south of SR 64 at 5010 Uline Road, Bradenton, from the A/WPE/ST General Commercial, excuse me, General Agricultural Watershed Protection Evers Special Treatment Overlay Districts to the PDR/WPE/ST Planned Development Residential/Watershed Protection Evers/Special Treatment Overlay District, zoning district 2, and a preliminary site plan for 651 lots of single-family residential detached and semi-detached units.
Thank you, and this is a scheduled presentation. Ms. Leider, do you have any introductory comments?
Good morning, Rosina Leider, by the staff, and I have been sworn here, representing the applicant is Mr. Donal New and Dorinda Marvin.
And before you begin, does the, do any of the commissioners have any ex parte communications on this particular item, other than the chairman? No? All right.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Don New, and I'm the agent for the project we've been working on for a while. It is Crestwind, a planned development in Schrader Manatee, and going to take you through a... Is it? Not moving. Nobody's using the mouse yet. There we go. Here we are, we're about, we're north of 70 and south of 64 on Eline Road, and right in the middle of the northeast sector, and the request is for a planned development residential, the property owner, of course, is SMR. The project is about 250 acres, and it'll be 651 units. The existing land use is vacant, and we'll rezon the property from the general ag to the planned development residential. I wanted to give you a little history, so Dorinda from Caleb Grimes' office is going to take over for a couple, because she's been working on this whole sector, and she can give you a little history, and then I'll come back and go through the particulars.
Thank you. Good morning, for the record, Dorinda Marvin, Senior Planner with Grimes Goble, and I have been sworn. I'm actually here this morning representing Schrader Manatee Ranch, and wanted to talk to you about this particular area that we call the Northeast Quadrant. There were about 7,000 acres in 2009 that Schrader Manatee recognized they wanted to look to for future development. We came in at that time with a comp plan amendment for that land, and we identified that land as mixed-use community. We wanted to look at it holistically. What happened in our legislature following that is that DRIs, as you know them, these large projects that we see, while we have existing DRIs, there are no new DRIs. What that meant was that this land, every time someone would come in with a development, you would see it individually. Schrader Manatee, being a good steward of this land and a partner with Manatee County, wanted to look at some master planning, and what they have done, there's a map here, and I don't think this was in your packet, so if you want to take a look, this is what we call the Northeast Quadrant. They were two areas that we had planned, and what you'll see here in the yellow are the thoroughfare roadways that Schrader Manatee will be building. We also have identified all of the development lands as either being for residential, we've identified school locations, we've actually been working with the school board on contracts, we've identified future commercial intersections, we have identified park areas. And this past week, the Board of County Commissioners entered into, with Schrader Manatee, a local development agreement to review concurrency. So instead of looking at every project individually, we reviewed the traffic for this entire area. And what that meant was that Schrader Manatee will come in and build those roadways, build those utilities, and looked at this as a whole, so that the board didn't have to think every time they came in, they would have to be considering the impacts of those projects on those particular components. This is in the MUC Future Land Use category, you don't see a lot of projects in the MUC. There are two areas in our counties, some are in Lakewood Ranch and some are in western Manatee County. And what that is, the mixed-use community in 2009, at the time, the rules required that we look at two specific things that affected this, a jobs-to-housing balance in an area, and also walkability, we were looking to reduce vehicle miles traveled. So we looked at each intersection throughout this area, and you'll see on those maps what we call activity centers. They were all over the map, because at the time, the theory was we wanted one every half mile, we wanted someplace that you could walk to work, that you could walk to a store. Since 2009, a lot of things have changed. Things have changed in our marketplace, in our retail sector, how we utilize retail, and we've changed how we work. Frankly, a lot of people work from home. I beg Caleb to do that on a regular basis. I try and do it at least once a week, because we have that ability, and so it really reduces the need for those activity centers. So you may remember last year that you considered amendment to that mixed-use community, and what we said was those activity centers would really be optional, so that rather than place commercial activity or office activity at every intersection, we would really look at where it was necessary, where the market felt it made sense. So if you look at the map for this property, you'll see two activity centers. What that amendment in 2017 allowed us to do was say, if those activity centers are not appropriate, we will then revert to the residential subarea. So this project, and Don will discuss with you those parameters, is being developed under the R subarea. And if you have any questions for us, Mr. Richard Bedford is also here, Vice President of Planning for Schrader Manatee. Thank you.
Thank you. So I thought that would be good to have a little history of the area before we get into the particulars. So here we are, here's 70 on the south and 64 on the north, and Eline Road will come up and border our western border. There's, as I said, 250 acres, a little zoomed in, there's not much around us right now, we're all ag, Lakewood National is down here, about the closest thing. And here's the future land use he was talking about, the MU CR and the zoning. We're in the middle of the ag, but this will all fill in as this master plan takes place. And we always take a look around, it's not really applicable in this instance, because we don't have anything really close to us, but we always look for densities and the, you know, in proximity, so you see everything from about one and a half units an acre up to three units an acre, and we'll be right in there also, but it's typical planned development residential for Manatee County that we've done a lot of. So the particulars are, we're going from the mixed-use commercial residential, this designation allows up to nine units an acre, net density and three units gross density, and we're right there in the middle, kind of a typical PDR of 2.7 units an acre for net and 2.6 for gross. The, here's our preliminary site plan, you can see we're bounded on three sides by those thoroughfare, this is Eline, it'll go up our western boundary, this is rangeland, it'll go across our southern boundary, and Bourne Side, it'll go up our eastern boundary, and this is all part of that agreement that SMR has to do the entire infrastructure at once, and then, and then we get plugged in there. Our open space and buffers, we're way over. With this product, the Crestwind product that Colter does, we're supplying more than 114 acres, which is 11% over the requirement, and one way we did that was on the buffers, and I'll show you a buffer plan here in a minute, but we have a 50-foot buffer around all those collector and arterial roadways, all the way around to ensure the future compatibility and screening. And in, within that buffer, we actually have berms and a lot of plantings. So here's our open space, you can see there's a lot of green and blue on that space, and here's that 50-foot buffer I was talking about, you can see it all the way around these collector and arterial roads, all the way around it, to buffer, to ensure buffer, and environmental feature in the, in the, on the northern part, in our lakes and open space, over 41%. So here's our construction phasing, the Uline will go first on that western, so we'll start at our main entrance and go from west to east, of course, this is conceptual, but that's the way we see it laying out as these roads get built. Here's a typical Crestwind entryway. I've worked with these folks for a few years, I've done entitlements for them before, they build a nice product, and this is their brand of Crestwind, and it's typical, but here's another typical, the clubhouse that they build. It's geared towards active adults, and they build a nice clubhouse, of course, with all the activities and amenities. The positive aspect of this, this is different, I've been in this business a long time, and I don't know I've ever had a project that quite liked this. Of course, SMR does things right. This is the first time, I think, I've ever sat around the table with all the engineers and all the planners for this whole sector. We had meeting, had regular meetings and agreed, and gave, swapped plans back and forth, and plugged everything in, and make sure everything was all copacetic, and the transportation is... And the transportation is studied in a regional fashion, so you got that. So all the utilities are looked at and distribution and, and collection. And of course, on the natural systems, when you do it regional like that, we have virtually no environmental impacts with this project. So it's different, but very good. So in conclusion, our landscape buffers exceed the code minimums. All our open space exceeds it by over 11%. This is a nice plan and a good company. I say that. I've worked with them for a long time. They build a nice product. They have a lot of stuff going on in this region. And we want to move this forward so we can do everything at once and coordinate the infrastructure. We'll comply with all the applicable comp plans. Staff recommends approval. And I just want to say, staff overall effort, Rosina did an excellent job. This one, this is not easy with the LDA going on and plugging in the whole regional. She did a lot of work and staff has to look at, at, you know, the public work side of it and the planning side of it. We're not typically, we're not just looking at one spot here. We were looking at the whole area. So it was a Herculean effort, and she did a good job. And everybody did, on staff. So with that, we'll answer any questions you have, but we respectfully request approval so we can move this forward and, and get the whole project going. So thank you very much.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. New?
I have one. Is that Bornside Road?
Bornside, yes.
Is that Dam Road? Is that on the...
Dam Road? Is that Dam Road? Yes.
It's that Dam Road.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. New. Ms. Leidner, presentation from staff.
Good morning again, Rosina Leidner by the staff. Sorry. Erin. Sorry. Excuse me. The request is to resound the entire property that is more or less 250 acres for A1 and the site is with the watershed protection ever overlay and the special treatment overlay to PDR. And also approve a preliminary site plan for 651 residential lots that could be detached and semi-detached. This is an area that shows that the area is the first project to the northeast quadrant. And here you have the zoning. The project is on A, general agriculture and with the special treatment overlay and the ever reservoir partially with the project site. The future land use category, as Dorinda explained and Mr. New explained, is MUC, is mixed-use community residential and MUC A3. And as Mr. Marvin explained, there is provision in the comprehensive plan that says that if there is not intent or the need for a activity center, the area could be developed only with residential use. And the maximum density that is allowed is three dwelling units per acre gross density and nine dwelling units per acre net density. Here, there are the developments in the area. To the south is Lakewood National Golf Club. And far, further to the west is the northwest sector, DRI. This is a commercial area that is under development, underdeveloped right now, Lorraine Corners and the Cypress Bank, DRI. The site is located west to the future development area boundary and is located, you know, like the applicant says, north of State Road 70 and south of State Road 64 and east of Lorraine Road. And was part of the northeast quadrant sector that have particulars regulation for the entire area. The preliminary site plan was shown by the, by the applicant, and I go with detail. The density that is proposed is 261 and 278. There is with the range of potential densities with the MUCR. They are proposing 46% of open space. There are 3.9 acres of wetland, and the application, the proposal didn't include any impact to wetlands or wetlands buffer. And they are proposing a recreational area with 5.2 acres with amenities like the applicant Here you have marked the access point. The proposal includes three access points. The first one is the main access in U-Lane Road, or whatever is the pronunciation. The second one is to the west along Bornside Boulevard that's going to be only intended for the residents. And the third one is along Rangeland Boulevard. All the, the access are gated. And with the star, you see the recreational facility that is proposed. Here I mark that, like the applicant mentioned, that the project exceed the minimum buffer that is required and going to be instead to have 20 feet, they're going to have 50 feet along Bornside, U-Lane and Rangeland. And there is a 50, 50-foot wetland buffer along to the nor, northern property line. The applicant is asking a specific approval to reduce the front, from yard seatback from 20 and 15. And I'm going to show you a slide that explains why we are supporting the, the reduction of the seatback. The minimum lot size is 5,200. And this is bigger than other lots that has been approved in the surrounding area like the web. And the applicant is asking for the option to exchange the lots that are going to be 44 by 120 and 30, have the option that they can be single-family detached or single-family And this is the sketch with the lots. Like you see to the right is the single-family that could be detached or semi-detached. That one's going to be semi-detached. Or the lots that are going to be 50 and 60 wide by 130. The project needs a special approval for exceed one dwelling unit per acre and the MUCR and MUCA3 adjacent to a perennial stream to the north and partially with the watershed protection ever and a special treat, treatment overlay. And the project comply with all the regulations that are required in order that staff can support this special approval. And the applicant is asking, like it says, the reduction of the front yard seatback and staff is in support of the proposal since the applicant is going to provide a 23 feet from the sidewalk to the buildings. That is considered more or less the maximum length of a big truck. And we are concerned that don't going to be any encroachment in the sidewalk. A positive aspect of this development is that they have a main boulevard that I didn't show you before. The main boulevard is going to be right away of 670 feet. And they include a big, a wide sidewalk that's going to be 10 feet wide, like a trail. And the other section for more local streets is going to be 61, and they have sidewalks in both sides, like you see here, plus green area in the middle. That is a superior design for the area. Like the applicant said, the site is going to be connected to three major roadways, planet, roadways. It's growing from the west to the east consistent with the availability of services. They are providing 46% of open space, and they are providing recreational amenities and green space. And adequate, adequate buffer are proposed. Also, PDR allowed the board to propose new, or stipulation in order to ensure compatibility. The negative aspect is like, is surrounded by A1. However, the, the proposal includes adequate buffer to the existing agriculture areas that in the future, if you remember, the LDA is going to be subject to residential development. Actually, there is not infrastructure for, provide access, so portable water or wastewater is not available. And I'm going to explain why we consider that the, the project could be approved since the applicant provide for review and approval, the master plan for infrastructure for all the northeast sector. This plan is under review by the Public Works Department, and when this plan is approved, all the provision of this plan is going to be applicable for these projects at time of final site plan. The other negative aspect could be that the lots are going to be close to the major thoroughfare, going to be subject to light or sun noise. However, this aspect is minimized for the 50-feet buffer that the applicant is proposing that is exceeding the regular buffer that we consider. And that the lots are smaller than the regular agriculture lots. And as I explained, that going to be adequate separation for the agriculture areas, like the mitigation factor, that a 50-feet wide buffer. The lots are compatible with the size of other subdivisions in the area. And as I explained, there is a master infrastructure plan under review actually in order to satisfy all the requirements for provide adequate access and water and sewer. And also, I believe that was approved, the LDA? And we don't have any other outstanding or remaining issues, issues and no citizen comments. And we request, we recommend approval with the stipulations. If you have any particular questions, I am able to answer that.
Okay. Thank you for that good presentation. Before we ask the board, or the public, are there any comments on item number five that was just presented to the commission? See no one coming forward. Commissioners, any questions on the presentation? Mr. Horrigan?
I've got a couple. You don't mention that this is, is this adjacent to Panther Ridge on the east side?
No. There is no adjacent to...
North of Panther Ridge?
This Panther Ridge is, I think it's far away.
Well, Dam, Dam Road, or, sorry, Bornside.
Yeah, but it's not adjacent to Panther Ridge. Adjacent to the, this site is only agriculture areas.
Currently?
Yeah, currently.
Further south?
And further south is Lakewood National Golf Club, and after that, State Road 70.
The only reason I asked the question is because I was the Vice President of Marketing at Panther Ridge. And at that time, the western boundary of the Panther Ridge subdivision, on the north side of State Road 70, was what was going to be Dam Road. And so I'm just trying to figure out where this is in relationship to those properties.
I don't know. I have to search in the internet where is Panther Ridge, but it's not adjacent to the site.
These are the, those developed lots here. We're up here.
Okay. And is, is...
Side goes here and there's vacant property, ag property there.
Is Bornside going to be constructed all the way through?
Yes.
State Road 64 from 70?
And Don New, and I have been sworn, yes. The, the, the plan is on, in, in the agreement, in development agreement, all of this infrastructure is going to be put in at once.
Okay. Answers my questions.
Who's building, who's building a wastewater operation?
That was the, that was the advantage of, of doing the master planning for everything. We could look at capacities, distribution, collection, on transportation. And that was the idea I was telling you about, about meeting with all the people in the room. SMR coordinated with all the, we had all the, every engineering and planning company in, in the area around the table, planning all of this, and that was part of the agreement.
Will that also be true for the roads?
Yes. Yep.
Very good. Commissioners, any other comments? Questions? All good? Okay. Ms. Leidner, any closing comments?
No, no, I'd be fine.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Thomas, Mr. Gersonberger.
For the record, Thomas Gersonberger, Public Works Department, I have been sworn. Mr. Chair and Final Commissioners, just to elaborate a little bit further on the master planning and the master infrastructure design, the actual physical plans, the construction plans for the thoroughfares within the northwest, northeast sector area, including those that are bounding this particular project, including E-line, Rangeland and Bornside. Those plans have all been under review for the past several months, including the associated, excuse me, water and sewer infrastructure, and also, I believe also the reclaim irrigation component that would be provided by the Braden River Utilities. All those, all those components of infrastructure have been submitted or under, that are under review through multiple engineering firms that have been submitting these plans. And all the design effort and permitting effort is all for the common goal of the development of this entire area through the northeast sector. So in conjunction with the LDA that was approved by the board on Tuesday, there is already, you know, the stage has already been set for the development of this area. Not just for the, not, just as Mr. New brought up for this particular project, but for several other projects. I think the number is somewhere around 14 or 16 projects in total that will be going through, that will be permitted, reviewed and constructed, potentially constructed within this area.
Okay. Thank you for that supporting comment, Tom. Commissioners, any deliberate, Mr. Horrigan?
Make a motion.
Oh, okay. Motion. Go ahead, please.
As the Chair, I should make sure we have allowed the applicant rebuttal and the staff rebuttal, staff summation, applicant rebuttal.
Oh, okay. I thought I asked that, but go ahead.
No rebuttal.
Rebuttal, okay.
I would just bring up one thing, just the, the, we do do our roadways a little differently, and that's why we asked for that, because we create the roadways to look like lineal parks. We do. We widen them out, and so the main boulevards with the sidewalks and the landscaping. So that was the only...
Which was similar to what I think Ms. Leidner showed us, that one picture.
Absolutely.
Right. Okay. Ms. Leidner, any final comments?
No. We found that the project is consistent with the regulation of the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. And we believe there is proposing something that is superior because contain more open space and the layout of the roads and the buffers are a superior design.
Okay. Thank you. Back to the Commissioners. Mr. Horrigan, motion?
I'd like to make a motion that based on the staff report, evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, and finding the request to be consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan and the Manatee County Land Development Code as conditioned herein, I move to recommend approval of the Manatee County Zoning Ordinance Number PDR 1719, Perin Z and Perin, Perin P. Approval of a preliminary site plan with stipulations A1 through A6, B1 through B3, C1 through C6, D1 through D3, granting special approval for a project one exceeding a gross density of one dwelling unit per acre in the MUC slash AC project, exceeding, I'm sorry. Lost track of where I was. sorry, lost track of where I was. Exceeding gross, oh, and two, adjacent to the perennial stream, three, partially within the watershed protection overlay district, and four, partially within the special treatment, special watershed, sorry, special treatment overlay district, adoption of the findings for the specific approval and treatment, specific approval and treatment overlay, sorry, I'm reading off a small print, and treatment and granting a specific approval for an alternative to land development code, section 402.7, point D, point seven, to allow reduction in the front yard setback as recommended by staff.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioners in favor, aye please?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passed, 4-0. Thank you. I'll now turn the chairmanship over to Mr. Conley for the final item, number six.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
I was going to do that, yeah.
All right. Mr. Goodrich, could you please read item number six into the record?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number six is PA-18-02/Ordinance 18-17, Ecoplexus Inc., Alternative Energy Generation Facility. It's an ordinance for a privately initiated text amendment by Ecoplex Inc. to amend Element One definitions to add specific definitions for alternative energy generation facility, low temperature thermal power, photovoltaic PV, solar power, solar array, and solar field utility use and utility use heavy. To amend Element Two, future land use to revise policy 2.1.1.5 to encourage the development and use of renewable energy resources. And to amend Element Three, conservation to add goal 3.5, promote the development and use of alternative energy generation facilities, and objective 3.5.1, alternative energy generation facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich. And again, this is a legislative matter, so it's not necessary to be sworn, but it, but it is appreciated, so. All right, who's, who for staff is making the introduction on this?
Good morning, Planning Commissioners. Margaret Tusing with Building and Development Services, and I have been sworn, even though I don't need to be. In attendance, Mr. Goodrich pretty much covered what this, what the proposal is for this alternative energy generation facility. We have in attendance today representing the applicant, Pete Parkinson of Ecoplexus, and also representatives of Stantec. And the main purpose of this was to try to clarify where these types of facilities would be allowed within Manatee County. Currently, our comprehensive plan does not really address the utility use and the utility use heavy issue, and so it was uncertain as to how that applies. Right now, you have to have a comprehensive plan of PSP1 and then also rezone to PDPI. So we are trying to clarify for these types of facilities that there are other options available. Utility uses are currently allowed through the zoning code in pretty much every zoning district. These proposed changes to the comprehensive plan will be the framework to update the existing land development code. And that will come to you after the comprehensive plan has gone to, to the board for transmit to DEO and then the responses. It's anticipated that that, the final adoption public hearing will be in June of this year. And then the text amendments will follow. So at this time, I will turn it over to the representatives of Stantec and Ecoplexus, and they have a presentation. And so if you have any questions after that, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Thank you, Margaret. Good morning, Commission. My name is Josh Philpott. I'm with Stantec. And with me today is Pete Parkinson with Ecoplexus, the applicant in this comp plan amendment. Pete is here to answer any specific questions relating to the owning and operating of a power, solar power generating facility. So if you do have specific questions, feel free to ask, and what I can't answer, Pete will be able to. Just to go through a quick presentation, Margaret did a great job outlining the request, but we're here today, today to discuss a privately initiated comp plan amendment. Its intent is to promote the development of solar facilities in Manatee County. It also serves to streamline the permitting process and differentiate alternative energy, specifically solar powered facilities, from traditional power plants. There's a huge difference in the way they're, they're managed and operate and also how they, their impacts on the, the area. So as you, as I go through this presentation, the images are intentional to show what little impact there is. In this case, the, the image is during the construction and installation of a solar facility. And even during construction, you see there's, there's minimal impact. The trenching is really there for the cabling and that's it. There are small foundations for the panel racks themselves, but there's a trend in the power industry now to go to more alternative energies. The, the price of solar panels and solar production has dropped significantly over the past several years and makes it more viable as an energy facility. Also, going away from, from the centralized power plants and going to more localized power generating facilities, we see that across the country, including Florida and in southwest Florida. Typically, these are located in agricultural areas, ranging anywhere from 30 to 250, or excuse me, 30 acres to several hundred acres. They can be owned on, owned property, or some providers are interested in leasing land for a period of 20 to 35 years, 20, 30, 40 years. At that time, the lease could be renewed and the facility continue to operate, or it could be repowered, or excuse me, removed and converted back to agriculture. One of the things to keep in mind is that this is still a form of farming. It's farming radiant energy and turning it into power and, and not producing a cropped, per se. So the current regulatory structure, Margaret outlined pretty, pretty well. The comp plan and land development code currently require all power generating facilities to be located in a PSP1, public, semi-public 1, future land use category. And on top of that, the comp plan requires that any development within PSP1 be rezoned to plan development public interest. We are proposing to amend the comprehensive plan to allow for these solar facilities to be located in agricultural and industrial areas. Again, to separate, create a definition that separates alternative energy to, or from traditional power facilities. And as a result, one of the things of the current regulatory structure with these power facilities is when they're developed in agricultural areas and you have to change the future land use classification of PSP1, that future land use classification is intended for heavier impact uses, water treatment facilities, wastewater treatment facilities, large public infrastructure projects that, that have impacts beyond their borders, that impact the community from a environmental sense, compatibility sense. And at the end of these leases, you're left with, if, if the lease terminates, you're left with an isolated future land use classification and a zoning that doesn't really work in an agricultural area. So just to go through our requests, we're looking to, we're proposing to include a few different definitions, specifically to add alternative energy power generating facilities, add a definition for photovoltaic solar power, really defines the use itself. And as most people refer to these facilities as solar fields or solar arrays, we added a reference to that, to the more technical photovoltaic solar power facility. Uh-oh. I don't know what happened. Somehow I zoomed in. There we go. In addition, there's a added definition to separate those low impact utility uses such as electrical substations, telephone boxes, those sort of infrastructure requirements as part of development that really have little to no impact on the surrounding area and, and then create a separate definition for heavier utility uses such as wastewater treatment facilities and water treatment facilities, and then major pumping stations as well. You'll notice in the definitions, there's a reference to the Florida statutes. That reference is to the, the Power Plant Siding Act, and that was intentional. So power plants or power generating facilities that generate over 75 megawatts must go through, that's a larger facility, it must go through the, it's defined as a heavy utility use, but also it has to go through the Power Plant Siding Act, which is an independent process of a comp plan amendment or a rezoning. And so those, those facilities below 75 megawatts would be defined as a, a utility use. We also propose to amend policy 2.1.1.5 to encourage the development of renewable power generating facilities. Again, the reference to the Power Plant Siding Act, but it will allow for these developments to be located in all future land use classifications. The reference to the, the implementation of this will be through the land development code. We have amended, or we have submitted an application to Manatee County to amend the land development code to adopt design standards to deal with compatibility. That includes landscaping, buffering, also setbacks from the adjacent property lines and the roadways, and providing for environmental protections for the existing development areas. So that will be the next step. We are, and that's really where kind of nuts and bolts of the design standards will be adopted. And again, we're working with Manatee County on that, and we, as this moves forward, we continue to work with, with, work with the county to, to address those issues. So if there's any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rhodes?
I think this is much needed, but just a clarification for myself to educate me just a little. So if I wanted, prior to this, if I wanted to put up solar panels on my, my home, I basically have no issues related to that. But if I wanted to do solar panels in this area, okay, or I would have had to follow the utility policy before. So what was, what was the dividing line that said you could do it this way, but now you've got to follow public utility procedure?
Margaret Tusing with Building and Development Services. Right now, we look at those individual solar power things that you do either on your home or your business, are more building code related because typically they are located on your roof, and so the building department handles that. And we're not really proposing to change that. To move into a solar field or a solar array, right now, what we have is the, the only one that's been developed in Manatee County was at the Florida Power Plant. So that is already designated PSP1, and they already have the PDPI zoning. So they came in and they did an amendment to their plan development, public interest zoning, to do the facility that they have at the, at the power plant. And so because this is becoming more and more popular, because the cost has gone down, they're looking to do solar power, and Florida Power has done that throughout the state of Florida. And most of the solar arrays that they do are like in the 74.5 megawatts is what they do. So we're just trying to open it up more so that you are not looking at it. And part of the problem is in the comprehensive plan, we did not actually identify or define what a utility use was. We did it in the land development code, but not in the comprehensive plan. So now we're giving that definition of utility use and utility use heavy so that we would know where. And we're, so in future land use categories, if you're allowed to have a zoning, or I think we're putting in an A, LM, and HM as the zoning districts. So if your future land use category allows you those zoning districts, then you would be allowed to do this with, with that zoning.
Got it. Thank you.
I have a question. Again, it's for clarification. This, the intent is to allow for commercial ventures that would generate power through the solar arrays. Is that correct?
Correct.
Are those ventures regulated as a public utility? Do they answer to the Florida Utilities Commission?
I will, so I'm going to let Pete come and answer that, answer that question specifically, but they generate the power and then have a interconnection agreement with the power facility for that franchise to, to purchase the power. So it is operated and connected just like a solar, or just like a power generating facility, so.
And, and before the applicant steps forward, one additional question. I'm presuming that you've researched other municipalities in Florida that had similar requirements, and is this consistent with those municipalities? Is it more restrictive, less restrictive? How does it compare to other municipalities? Because I know, I know there's a large facility in DeSoto County that I think is one of the largest in the state, if not the country.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a, that's a great question. And, and one of the issues that we see across the state is, is because solar hasn't really taken off or is just really over the last several years become a viable, economically viable power facility, most of the regulations that have, that have been adopted to deal with power generating facilities are geared more towards the traditional power plants, the coal, the gas, the oil. Fired facilities create a huge amount of impacts, both environmentally and from compatibility standpoint. And this is across the, the state. Now, we've worked on application or amendments to land development code and comp plan amendments in many jurisdictions. And, and Manatee County is no different. The, the regulations are geared towards that facility or towards those traditional facilities. And having to amend the comp plan and land development code has become the norm in dealing with this. Now, different jurisdictions have, have approached it differently, wanting to do it on a zoning level or wanting to do it on a comprehensive plan. But this is definitely consistent with the general trend to address it in a, in a comprehensive plan. And then the design specific, the design guidelines and design standards, whether it's, you know, landscaping or setbacks, or those sort of things are implemented through the land development code, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and staff also looked at, you know, surrounding jurisdictions, both their comprehensive plans and their land development codes to see how they addressed it. So we believe that we're incorporating it in the most appropriate manner. And we, and we have worked with both Stantec, who represents private providers for this, as well as FPL. They have reviewed, you know, both the comprehensive plan amendment and the land development code, because they will also be doing the same thing. You know, this is not just for commercial, I guess Florida Power is commercial too. You know what I mean? Not just for the power generation facilities to expand, but it's also like Ecoplexus could come in. And I do want to say that we are attempting through this to make sure that we are, as you all know, we're in the middle of doing our process improvements, which are doing some different things in the comprehensive plan. So we are not, you know, right now, our plan lists a lot of uses specifically within future land use categories. And we are proposing to get away from that to some extent. So we are not, that's why you don't see, oh, you're allowed to do this in the AGR land use, you're allowed to do it in this land use, because we're controlling that through the land development code, which is the appropriate process. So you're not going to see the future land. So you're not going to see future land use designations that say you can do solar fields. It's going to be controlled. You have an underlying land use category, and then what are the zonings that go with that? That is how we are determining where it is located, where they can be located.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Did he answer your question about PUC?
Uh, no.
So it's sort of a dashed line. So the interconnection agreement and the power purchase agreement are the two.
I'm sorry, I see the clerk looking at me.
Peter Parkinson with ECOplexus.
Thank you.
And so the power purchase agreement and the interconnection agreement are the two things you have to have with the utility, and they're separate departments. And the rules that the utility or FPNL has to follow are regulated by the PUC already. So that's, it's sort of a gray line that we answer to them, but it's through the utility.
It's through the agreement, not, not an actual regulatory oversight.
Yeah, unless we go into the large, you know, the really large scale, and it's managed at the state, and.
What is, what is that scale? If there's like.
That's 75 megawatts or larger.
Megawatts, okay, all right. Is the, related to this, anybody can answer this question, are we limiting, is there a, is there a limiting factor in our, in the information being presented or proposed?
Yes, if you look at, under the definition portion of it, it's under utility use heavy. We refer to those as being power generating facilities that operate at a threshold above that specified. The Power Plant Siding Act is anything above 75 megawatts.
Correct.
So all of these facilities, if they're considered a utility use, would have to stay under that threshold. And if you, you know, go to Florida Power's website, you'll see a lot of facilities, and they're all at the 74.5 megawatts, because they want to stay under that threshold.
How convenient.
Well, just, I mean, that, that Power Plant Siding Act is, is a fairly extensive process. It's, and it actually removes some local authority in the decision-making process. But it's, you know, anywhere from a year and a half to two years, environmental assessments and those sort of things, above and beyond what is required for the local authority. So that's, that was one of the reasons, FPNL does 74 and a half, not because they're not regulated by the, the Utility Commission, because they are. They do it because of the permitting, a couple of things. There's, there's the permitting requirement, that's very onerous and time-consuming. And, and these, again, are for very, as you can see in the images, in this one, it's, you know, right along the waterway, the landscaping and grass is still there, it's, you know, there's, there's little to no impact outside of the initial, just trenching for a main line. So there's, there's a significant difference.
Mr. Horgan, you have a question?
Would this also give approval for wind-generated? This is strictly for solar?
Correct. We did not address wind. Wind is another, completely, it has a separate set of impacts and concerns. You know, solar facilities are located, I mean, in our Land Development Code application, we have a maximum height of 15 feet with a landscape buffer. And most of the facilities are even less than that, only at 15 feet when you have a completely tilted up, first thing in the morning, last thing in the evening, as the, the solar panels rotate to track the sun. A wind-powered facility is, you know, way up in the air, and there's a lot of visual impacts. It does make some noise. So we intentionally kind of didn't go down that road.
But I didn't see anything, I'm sorry, I didn't see anything in the, I'm sorry, I can't get back to that item, but I didn't see anything in there that said that was in the, you know, the wind was in the heavy category versus what we're approving here.
So I guess the question is, how, how do we have assurance that it's restricted solely to solar-powered, and that somebody's not going to come up with a system that?
Sure, and I think it's defined, or the definitions are pretty clear. It includes photovoltaic, alternative energy, the definition for alternative energy, see if I can go back.
There we go.
Yeah, alternative means a facility that uses photovoltaic power to generate electricity. It does not include wind. Again, that was somewhat intentional. I think, you know, these definitions clearly define it as solar.
I, I think of solar being more passive, and wind, wind turbines, I think would be more of a potential for noise, for line-of-sight interruptions, things like that. It seems like it could have more of an effect outside of the property boundary, and I think that's probably the concern. If we, and it appears, I think staff would probably, could provide some read on this, but it seems to me that this is an attempt to keep this passive, power generation as passive as possible, and limit it to that. That would be the concern. I, I think everybody, you know, likes the idea of solar power generation, but we just need to know that it doesn't impact the neighbors adversely. Mr. Horgan.
That next slide, I thought it was, that one. Can there be something in there that sort of?
Well, we, right now, the way we're doing it, as you, as Mr. Philpot said, is alternative generation facility. Those are the definitions. There's not a wind-powered generation facility mentioned. Shall mean a facility that uses photovoltaic solar energy power to generate electricity. This facility may also have other equipment that is directly involved in the storage and transmission of electricity. Then when you go down to utility use, it is specifically alternative energy generation facility is what is mentioned. So you would go back to your definition of alternative energy generation facility, and that is limited to photovoltaic solar.
So staff feels that the definition is narrow enough where it protects the, that?
Pretty, it's pretty narrow.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Roth?
Information. The purpose of this plant is to sell the electric power to whom?
It gets sold to the, the power company, in this case FPNL.
Only to power company? Could it be sold to a community?
Correct. It goes straight to, the interconnection agreement is with FPNL. There's franchise regulations through the Utility Commission and that sort of thing, but it does connect to the grid, and it gets distributed through that grid, just like, you know, any other power source. It does not get sold directly to users or consumers, and that's a.
If SMR came to you and said, we'd like you to build one on our 600 acres over here, and we'll pay for it directly, can they do that with this kind of thing?
I believe that's a legal question relating to the cell of power, and.
Mr. Roth, this, you know, our, the, the proposed comprehensive plan amendment doesn't address those types of issues. That is something that either the Public Service Commission, or, you know, is, is beyond that. This is, you know, regarding land use. The land use issue is that where can you locate these solar fields, and, you know, who it is sold to, how all that happens, that, that is a separate issue from a land use decision.
Is, is it correct? I'm sure you have a very extensive knowledge that, that element that Mr. Roth is questioning, that's controlled by the Utilities Commission?
And state law.
Yeah.
So where I live in Colorado.
Oh, another Colorado guy.
Actually allowed their community, little, small, couple megawatt community solar projects.
And we've mentioned FPL a lot, but to be clear, this area is serviced by multiple utilities. For instance, Peach River, it's not limited to any one utility provider, so I think large portions of Liquid Ranch are actually served by Peach River, so it's, it's essentially any public utility, power utility could purchase.
At the end of the day, you need those two things, the power purchase agreement and the interconnection. So I know, I've been working on these for about a decade now, a little over, and everybody's always worried that they're going to pop up everywhere. You still have to be able to plug in, you know, so you have to have those two things. So it, it definitely limits, you know, where these are and whatnot, so.
I do have an additional question. I have a little bit of background. I was the, a project manager for the solar ray that's on the city of Bradenton's facility, and I had a very quick education as to the elements of that. Typically, there's a, a storage element of, of the arrays. What, can you describe what would be expected with these, these arrays?
It sort of depends on what the utility's looking for. You know, if they just strictly want the solar, that's what it would be, you know, and then you have the inverters and transformers to step it up. But as battery power is coming down, it's, 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 we're really looking at it in potential designs right now, because it adds so much value, you know, because we really are picking up a lot of the peak curve, but, you know, it's that five to seven, you know, so we have, if we have battery storage along with it, we can do an even better job.
Balance that curve, and take off the high points, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, again, this has nothing to do with the, it's just information for the, for the industry. I know in the past, I think quite a few years ago, the cost per kilowatt was, I think, around 77 cents for solar generation, and purchasing it off the grid was around 10 or 11 cents. What's, what is that?
So I, I built one of the first ones in Florida a decade ago for JEA, and I think we were at like 27 cents at the time, so that was 10 years ago. I think Florida, the pricing is probably in the four cent range.
Okay, that, the, the delta between the two is, is a, is a function of the scale, so the, the information I got was a much smaller scale, so. So I, I think as, probably one of the reasons we see this coming before the Planning Commission is the fact that that delta, the cost to generate is coming down, I think is very, you know, I think anything that, you know, provides an alternative source is probably welcomed by most of the citizens of the community.
Really neat, I've, as I've watched this change, is, you know, there used to be big time-of-use differences in, in pricing, and out in California where they have so much now, the time of use is flat. So it's, it's becoming, it really works as a good peaker, you know, to cover that really expensive power, too.
Okay. All right, are there any additional questions? Thank you, thank you. I guess this is judicial, so, I mean, legislative, does staff have any closing comments?
I don't think so, unless you have any questions.
You want to drop the mic, or?
Oh.
All right. All right, if there are no other questions, deliberations, or discussions.
To be open to the public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to come and speak on this? Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Lori Gail, and I'm a citizen of Manatee County. My question is simply a curiosity question. Why Manatee County? What drew them here? So we can do it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, that, that's a very good question. What makes Manatee County attractive for a facility like this? I suspect one of the issues is agricultural land, and Manatee still has a significant agricultural community, or, so if you could maybe provide some clarification on what makes Manatee County attractive?
Couple reasons, like you said, agricultural, so land to use. You're looking for transmission, so you can actually plug in with capacity. But I can tell you, I also, we have, I'm working on, I'm going to keep Josh very busy here, probably for the next two years, all over the state, so. Looking at Baker County right now, with some other ones that, we're doing all our environmental studies right now to, to work on getting there permitting complete, so.
Okay, very good, thank you. Mr. Horgan?
I have another question. Is this something that can be replicated over and over again in our county? In other words, can we do dozens of them?
I would presume this is going to open it up to the free market, and anybody who is, can deliver the product as, as well or better than the applicant has the right to do that, so.
Well, I can tell you.
Again, I would like to say that this, you know, they happen to apply for the Comp Plan Amendment. We were looking at incorporating it as part of our process improvements, but the timeline is longer for that, so that is why we proceeded with the privately initiated amendment. This is not restricted to, you know, to.
It's not one applicant.
It's not, because this is not site-specific. This is a comprehensive plan amendment, a text amendment, and a Land Development Code text amendment. So it is, you know, it's comprehensive. It goes wherever the Land Development Code and the comprehensive, comprehensive plan allows you to do it. It's not site-specific.
Okay, all right.
And I can tell you, if you, there's an open queue on the interconnection, and there are three, three projects I know in Manatee County that are going through that study process right now.
So again, it's going to, the free market's going to dictate what happens.
Yeah, free market, and those other two documents that are very important that the banks look for.
Thank you.
Just from, Margaret touched on it. One of the reasons we did it, we decided to go through the Comp Plan Amendment and Land Development Code process, rather than going through a Comp Plan Map Amendment, as well as a rezoning to PDPI, wasn't about, you know, part of it was isolating agricultural areas to the PSP 1, future land use and rezoning. We could have gone through that process, but I, I think one of the, one of the intents and why we went through, while we're going through the process we are now, is so that it can be replicated, and it can be consistently applied across the county to, to whoever that comes in. And again, you're, you're seeing the first step in this with the Comp Plan Amendment, but also the Land Development Code Amendment will address the specific elements. So the current regulations are a little bit onerous. We would have to go through a Comp Plan Map Amendment and a rezoning. Those are both pretty lengthy. Again, you heard Peter talk about, there's, there's currently two or three different applications, and when you, when you look at the impact of those permitting steps duplicated over time, it gets to be pretty extensive. So rather than go through that process, this is one of those steps to streamline the permitting to allow for it to be, happen more, more quickly and efficiently, so.
All right, we were still open for public comment, so is there anybody else? We're getting pretty thin on the public here, so if there's anybody else in the public who wishes to come forward, please do so. Seeing none, we will close public comment. Any discussion, deliberation, or shall we consider a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roth.
Based upon the evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, the technical support documents, and finding the request to be consistent with the, with the Community Planning Act as codified in applicable portions of the, of portions of Chapter 163, Part 2, Florida statutes, and the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan, I move to recommend transmittal of PA-18-02 as recommended by staff.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Horgan, second. Chair, we'll call the matter to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0. That concludes our agenda today, unless we have some other problems we need to solve?
We'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Going to call, going to call a meeting to an end.